Welcome back to We Are Here. I'm your host Chase Levitt. And today I'm honored to be joined by two uh school board candidates here in Utah. Natalie Klein and Monica Wilber. Thank you two for coming on.
Oh, thanks so much for having us, Chase.
Of course. Um Natalie, we'll start with you. Can you just give a background about who you are and and why you're running for the state school board?
Sure, um I ran for my first uh term in twenty twenty. Um and that's when COVID was going on and and so you can go out, you couldn't go out and and campaign in the traditional way. So um I'm running again for reelection uh this year and it's so this is kind of a new experience for me and all other candidates that got in when I when I came in. Um but I first uh decided to run for the board um after watching education policy uh since after coming back from the United Nations in two thousand fifteen where I saw um with my own eyes and heard with my own ears, the plans that they had for for education globally and how they planned to get it down into every classroom in America and and uh their determination, their their pledge to do so and and to not stop until they had uh gotten that water to the end of the road down to to every child. So that's what got me interested um because I was very concerned about what their plans were um that included a lot of the um LGBTQ uh indoctrination. That was the main thing. Uh I learned about critical race theory um later uh just during the year that I was running and I remember reading the first article I ever read about it and uh it was a very um highly intellectualized article on the subject. Uh and I was like, what is this that I am reading? I was trying to wrap my head around it and but I knew instinctively um that we that it was a huge threat to our faith, to our family and to our freedoms here in America. And I thought, oh, this and the more I've learned, the more uh that that concern has uh been solidified. And now that I've watched for the past three plus years, this uh movement into our into our schools, uh it's been alarming. And I think everybody in the state has come to re- see some aspect of it in their child's education. And so um even the legislators, you know, have taken have become very concerned such that they have tried to pass passing different laws to stop it and revolutions and um so far, nothing's really done the trick because of the nature of CRT and it's uh the way it manipulates the language and deconstructs uh our systems.
Right? And thank thank you for that Natalie. And we'll definitely touch on on CRT and and what we believe that you or what you think you can do and what needs to be done to stop this advancement in our schools. But before that, uh Monica, would you like to introduce yourself? Give us some background in why you're running for the state school board?
Yeah, sure. Let me make sure my microphone's on. Um uh yes, I'm a former English teacher, a a former debate coach, um a homeschool mom. And uh I got involved in all the the stuff that's going on with schools right now, in part uh due to Natalie Klein. Uh I remember listening and seeing what was being said about her in the media and in the news and media and at the state board uh back in twenty twenty one when she first got on the board. And um it really kind of surprised me. I was I was a little bit shocked to see uh the public reaction to words that she was saying that um uh they were, to me, common sense. You know, we have to get these indoctrination um programs and and practices out of the schools. And you know, as a parent with kids in the system at the time, I'm like, oh, absolutely. Like, she's totally speaking sense on this. So I was able to actually meet Natalie and then we just kind of formed this working relationship. And it's led to us forming um a a website called HigherGround.Work. We put a lot of our research on there. Um we've worked on policy together, education policy and on informing and warming warning parents about a lot of these bad education trends that are filtering um from the schools into our homes. And uh it's really just very important that we protect our kids. Like, they are the future. I know it sounds trite, but it's really true. And um and it's something that's really close to my heart as well.
Right. Thank you for that. Um to start off um with our discussion, I want to ask both of you, what is the the biggest issue you see within our education system here in Utah, whether it be just the way it's set up, whether it be CRT, whether it be the woke indoctrination, whatever it may be, what is that number one thing that we need to we need to fight? Natalie, if you want to start with that?
Sure. Um so it's a huge problem. Um and we often call it a wicked problem, one that is um overly complex, uh not fully solvable. Um there's many complicated parts and pieces to the system and that uh are layered upon each other such that it creates a resilience to change. Um it's so it again, one of the reasons we created HigherGround.Work was to try to um kind of simplify the the complexity of these problems in a way that is manageable for people to quickly get up to speed and understand the different pieces and parts uh of this very complex system. So I highly recommend people go there because we are only going to be able to barely scratch the surface today because there are so many pieces and parts. And it's that interplay between all the pieces and parts that I think is the most concerning um and and difficult problem to address. And we've seen this in working with legislators that because we have legislators more and more trying to um tackle legislation to fix these problems, but they don't always hit it right. Um in fact, they usually don't get it quite right because the system is set up to uh find loopholes and exploit those loopholes. And so unless you and unless unless and until we have legislators that are willing and courageous enough to write uh really tight um legislation that can't where the language can't be subverted uh and and where it has teeth. Uh so that activists within the system don't just laugh at the legislation and and do it anyway because there are enough of them that they can simply band together and refuse to follow the law. And when there's as many as there are, what can the legislature do, right? To to stop it. We've seen this with um like the the bill that was passed to get pornography out of the schools. Right? It's twice now they've passed the bill. Uh this la- the um this last session, uh the second iteration passed um because the first iteration was uh it it just didn't do anything um to get it out because the there are those within the system that are hell bent on keeping it in. And so they will find a way where there's a will, there's a way. And so until um we at the policy, uh those of us that are policymakers understand the nature of the battle that we are in and and we um write language in such a way that it actually does something instead of just looking like it does something or sounding like it might do something. Um we're gonna continue to spin our bills.
Right. Thank you for that. And Monica, you mentioned you were a former English teacher.
Um yes.
I what I'm wondering is, when you were a teacher, um what what problems did did you find? Why when you were working in in the system, um what did you find and and what will you do on the state school board to to fix those problems?
Okay, well, first of all, it was a while ago. It was over two decades ago. So um the system was very different from what it is right now. Um some of the problems that I think have carried over from that time, however, um are you saw that time when I started teaching was kind of the the creep in of of the uh I would say just some of this indoctrinal thinking. Um uh as a teacher, I was actually trained in in DEI before. It was called DEI. Um and that's, you know, dating back to the late nineties. And um but you know, it didn't really stick at that point. At that point, standards were a relatively new thing um as far as being implemented in the classroom. Um I think it you saw at that time, maybe that's when we start to see a little bit of loosening of student discipline policies um and of you know, just and an increase in kind of like passing kids along promotion, you know, social promotion where they might not have had the grades, but teachers were being kind of pushed to make sure that they got passing grades so they could you know, go through the system.
Right.
Um but it it was very different back then. I uh you know, I wrote my own my own curriculum. There's no money in that for large companies, for outside organizations, when teachers write their own curriculum. And so that's been systematized. That's been standardized. It's been taken out of many of the teachers' hands. Um so that's one big thing that's not changed for the better, obviously. Um and uh you, there was a second part to your question. Do you remember what that was as far as um?
Um well, I I just asked um what you had seen as a as a teacher and and how you would fix those problems now.
Okay, so how I would fix these problems. Um they are new problems now, and these are problems I'm I've seen as a parent. So on the other side of the table, right?
Yeah.
And um part of the the problem is is we don't have a strong foundational focus on those academic fundamentals. We've really shifted away from those. And I believe a lot of teachers feel like they kind of have free rein to share their personal lives and their political views in the classroom as a part of, you know, broadening kids um view of the world. I don't think that's appropriate, you know, as both a de- former debate student and as a debate coach. My kids, I never knew my debate coach's political leanings ever. And yet, you know, that's what we did. We talked about current events and we talked about politics. I never, my my students didn't know my political leanings. Uh that was not viewed as inappropriate. And yet, we were still able to have, you know, a very high quality state championship program because um that's that's it's not dependent on a teacher necessarily like putting their personal beliefs and views out there, you know, in the classroom for students to see. So that's the first thing I would do is kind of restore this uh foundation, this focus on foundational academics and um that's sorely needed at the board. We have a lot of policies and programs and practices that have expanded the scope of uh public education beyond what is appropriate. Where they're taking over many of the roles that parents have traditionally filled. That's another thing that needs to be fixed. A s- a school system that tries to be everything to everyone really doesn't do anything well. And that's a huge problem.
Right. I completely agree. I couldn't have said that better. Those are all problems that need to be addressed. And Natalie, I want to ask you um what what things did you accomplish your your during this term that you're in right now? Um and what things do you look to continue to accomplish if you're elected to another term?
So I've worked really hard at um a a primary focus of mine has been to educate parents and my constituents on the different trends that I'm seeing, um the different policies, the workings um of the system so that they can uh I I strongly believe that if families have good information, they can make better decisions for their children. Um but the system has been set up to not be very transparent um to the average individual. Uh and so I've worked really hard to to bring that transparency and hopefully in doing so, make the system more accountable to parents. Um our state code uh says that the parents are the primary educator in their child's life and that schools are to be secondary and supportive of the parents. Um but when there is no transparency or understanding of how the system works, it makes it very difficult for parents to actually have a meaningful say in their children's education and to be able to you know, navigate the system in in a way that is productive um to getting their needs and their child's needs met. So I've worked very hard on that. Um in addition to that, as as far as my my work on the board, you know, I've brought attention to uh the issues of CRT and DEI, um diversity, equity and inclusion. Um and all the euphemisms uh that it goes by in the education system. It's like a whole new language. Um and many of them are euphemisms uh for these agendas that are being put in place. Um and so trying to shed light on on what these terms really mean so that parents can be speaking the same language um when they approach their teachers and administrators with their with their concerns. Um social emotional learning has been another big one that I've tried to bring attention to as as well as um the system's version of social emotional learning, um the state level portrait of a graduate, um the state's cookie cutter plan for ensuring that all students um graduate with certain um competencies, which you would think are that would mean academic skills and abilities. But uh it's what they call the soft skills or the life skills or the twenty first century skills uh or workplace skills. Um and they are the more subjective um kind of attributes that sound really great that parents want their kids to, you know, every parent wants their child to be more responsible, more resilient, more um creative, you know, all of the more empathetic, you know, all of these things. But what parents don't understand is that these words don't mean, when the system uses these words, it means something very different than what parents think they mean. And so, uh you know, bringing attention to the fact that we have uh an ESG or an environmental social governance kind of system embedded into um into our education system. And that is known as both, you know, kind of a combination be of social emotional learning and personal personalized competency based learning. The the SEL is the framework of the different, you know, the ideals that the system is trying to shoot for. Um and the PCBL is how they quantify and measure what's in the portrait of a graduate. So it's the system judging you not on your academic ability and skill, but your um subjective character traits um based on the system's definition. And if you uh do well at falling in line with these um with these subjective uh agendas around um more woke ideologies, racial, environmental um social, economical uh and environmental justice um ideologies, then you will do well on, you will score well on your personalized competency based learning.
Yeah.
And so this is more of a, again, like Monica mentioned, we have shifted heart away from objective academics, reading, writing, science, history. None of those mean what we think they mean anymore because they've all been embedded with these other social emotional learning competencies. And that's what's being scored. And they've got a transcript for them now. So um to help kids get into college, even if they don't have good academic grades, if they have a high SEL score or person, you know, that personalized competency based learning um score, then they can still get into college. And that's been put into our state code that to be an accredited institution means you have to allow for this alternative way of of being graded and measured and in order to graduate and be accepted to college. So you know, a couple other um things that I've done. Um I was able to, you know, make a motion at in one of our board meetings to withdraw the board's support of the Sharps survey as uh it is highly problematic. I don't know if you've ever taken it.
I I think I have.
But it's got, you know, like a hundred and sixty or two hundred questions on all of your behavioral and um psychological um issues, right, to try to gauge where you are. Uh but they that that data is then used um and manipulated to push for more programs that move us further and further away from the academic focus. Um so we got that that passed, so the state board no longer um supports the the so the Sharp survey, even though it's still given in all the schools because it comes through the Department of Health and Human Services directly to schools and not it's not dependent on the board's approval for it to be given. Um but I've worked on the the standards, the social studies standards, the English language arts standards, the science standards, the career and technical education standards to try to um bring those back in line with an academic focus and and get out the the soft squishy subjective language uh around these um social emotional learning competencies. And and Monica and I also worked together um to bring light to the issues of boys in girls spaces um and the new Title IX regulations um or interpretations that are coming from the Biden administration um and how that is um putting girls at risk uh in our schools, as well as we were able to co-author some legislation that passed a year um a year ago, HB three forty eight, also known in CODA's fifty three G ten two oh five to protect the rights of conscience. So students have protection in the moment when they are faced with these um kind of ideologically driven curriculums and programs that violate their conscience or religious belief or violate the uh rights of conscience or religious belief of their parents so that they don't have to jump through a million hoops to simply refrain from participating in those things so that it protects their conscience.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say thank you for all the work you've done so far. I mean, all of that's phenomenal. Um and and you mentioned lots of times about having an academic standard for people to graduate. It's it's changed into these other other ways that they're measuring people's intelligence or the way that they are um other than strict academics. And and it reminds me of in Oregon, how the governor basically made it so they don't have to be proficient in in math and reading and language arts. And like that, just and so that they can they can pass high school. It's it's crazy and I I don't understand it.
Okay, can I just say, we didn't need our governor to sign up, uh you know, a resolution or a a piece of legislation in in Utah. We are already doing that without anything having to be passed. It simply is, we are, our proficiency rates have continued to to take a nosedive while our spending has continued to skyrocket. Um and and yet we brag about our graduation rates being, you know, between eighty eight and ninety eight percent, depending on where in the state you are. And so in spite of our, you know, statewide proficiency scores in math, English, language arts, et cetera, being in the toilet, we are still graduating kids at super high rates. So you tell me, are we not doing the same thing as Oregon?
It it pr- it sounds like it. I mean, and and people look at Utah and they're like, we're a super conservative state. That's none of that stuff is happening. Uh when you talk about issues of CRT uh that uh men and women's sports, they're like, look, that's not happening here. But but it is. And so.
That's part of the system takeover, right? This is a global and national transformation of education. And it starts at the top. That's why when I went to the UN and I realized what was happening and how they the UN was planning on getting this in every classroom in America. And I thought, how do they do that? Well, they've they find their ways um through uh legislation legislators, state legislators or around them, whatever way they have to. It's like, I mean, we talk a lot about fluidity these days, right?
Right.
Fluidity between the genders. Well, the system is very fluid. That's why on HigherWork dot dot, sorry, HigherGround.Work, our website, we compare these systems to a tsunami. Um they're all tsunamis um are able to break down barriers and flood everything, right? So you can't, you can't stop it. And that's the system. The education system is designed to break down barriers and to flood every corner with these agendas.
Right. No, I completely agree. And and Monica, we we look at some of the things Natalie mentioned there. Um specifically when it comes to the so-called culture war um topics such as CRT, um uh the LGBTQ indoctrination in schools. Um and we can look at like school choice. Um I want to know first and foremost, um can you give, I know school choice is is kind of a polarizing issue for many people when it comes to Republicans versus Democrats on that issue. But can you talk a little bit about that? What your opinion is on that and and how you will help advance that or or that throughout the state?
Absolutely. Okay, so school choice in theory is a wonderful idea if you have a free market. Meaning that people can vote with their dollars and their feet and go freely to whatever type of education choices are available, whether they're offered by the government, which is public schools. Charter schools, which are still government schools, I don't think a lot of people understand that that's what they are. Um they are government funded and therefore they are still government schools. They they have, I think, a little more latitude in some areas. But the trend is to kind of bring all of public education um under a, you know, a single umbrella, a single payer system. And so you have charter schools and then you have private schools, right, right, which are privately funded, privately run. And then you have homeschooling. And then a variety of homeschooling, microschools, pods, et cetera. The the basic premise behind school choice is that and and this is something the public really needs to understand is that whatever government funds, government controls. So we now in Utah have government funded school choice options, meaning Utah fits all. That's the program where they offer up to eight thousand dollars uh per child to take advantage of, you know, private market options. Um but and as Ann Milner up at the Utah State Legislature said, you know, there is nothing that we do up here on the Hill that doesn't involve in count accountability. And they need to account for all that money given, all the money that is spent, every penny. So this isn't going to be just kind of like a free for all. It's not going to be a free lunch for parents. If they're giving families eight thousand dollars per child, maybe the restrictions will be or the regulations will be a little loose to begin with, but those will inevitably tighten up as they a- account for learning and for the spending of the dollars and the learning that's done underneath those dollars. So all we have done is really achieved kind of like a capturing of the private market now. I've already heard from uh private school owners who are very concerned because they've had parents coming and saying, hey, will you accept the Utah fits all money? Uh when that uh when Utah fits all gets expanded to, you know, it to practically, you know, I what is it? It's like thirty six million dollars right now. So to many families, right? I think they've had anywhere from twenty thousand to forty thousand, four twenty to forty thousand people already sign up for the money. I'm not quite sure what the exact number is. Um but in order to accept that money, you as an institution, once you accept even a dime of that money, if you haven't been accepting any sort of government funding up to that point, that puts you on the hook for government regulations and for complying with government regulations for every student in your school. It's not just for the the one student who comes to your school. You're on the hook for for complying with government regulations for all those students. And they will insist upon accountability. Um they'll want to know what that student is learning and that'll take the form of a it's, you know, it's called a a digital uh what's it, backpack? Right? Uh and uh and so basically a portfolio that the students um will have to submit to um to show, you know, this is what I have been spending on. This is what my learning consists of. And that will only expand. Um it's, school choice is a lot more complicated than people think. And but the goal is to get as many people hooked on the money as possible. And then what that ha- what that does at that point is it makes all these formerly independent institutions now dependent on the federal or, you know, the local funds for for school choice, but they're on the hook for both state and federal regulations. And then it's just the public system, you know, essentially carried out by private institutions. It's quite, it's quite an interesting plan.
Right. Yeah, well, thank you for that and and providing some more background and information on that topic because not a lot of people um fully know what it means. Um that may be why it's it's so polarizing. A lot of people are like, it does this, it does that when it it doesn't or. So thank you. Thank you for that. Um we got Um we got a few minutes left here. Um I just want to ask each of you to take like about a minute each just to explain. Or why, why um everyone should, they should give you their vote. Um what's your message to Utah? And then where people can can follow you, can donate, all that stuff. Natalie, if you want to start us off.
Sure. So thank you, thank you again for allowing us to come on. Um I I am running for state board. To protect children and to fight for families and to help um parents and teachers alike. That feel unheard um to be heard and to be able to bring that transparency and accountability. Um that that people want and need and deserve in our public education system. Um I know a lot of people need the system um or feel that they need it, that they don't have other options. And so for those that are in the system, um they need, they need that help. And they need a voice for somebody, from somebody like me that will, that will share their concerns. And look for ways to address those concerns, whether they're teachers or parents or students. And I I'm happy to stay in that position and help as long as the voters want me there. And I trust the voters to do that um in fighting for our, for the students of Utah. Um I want them to be free to protect their own consciences and not to feel like they have to um give up that. Essential liberty, uh that essential part of who they are in order to be able to graduate. Um and to succeed according to the definition that the that the system um has for success. I I believe there are other other definitions of success that um families and and students. Um adhere to that don't necessarily match that of the system. And I think they should be free to to decide on their own futures. And to think their own thoughts and to learn untethered from tech and not be data mined and surveilled. Um at every turn. Uh I I think students should be free from a a system that seeks to indoctrinate. Or put divisive labels on them. Um and and I promise that. In this role, I will continue to fight as I have and take the arrows for doing so. Um in order to protect uh children against this tsunami of systems. Um that are actively undermining faith, family and freedom, um including systems that seek to transform. Students' mindsets, attitudes, values, beliefs and behaviors through social, emotional. Um and psychological and behavioral conditioning um that seek to erase. Um children's sexual inhibitions and boundaries and confuse them about about biological reality. Um systems that seek to control student outcomes through standardization. Systems that seek to outsource decisions on children to so-called experts rather than to parents. And systems that seek to exploit children for political, sexual, social, environmental. And economic agendas. And lastly, I'm working to protect our schools. From becoming all service um community resource centers. That are social welfare centers that seek to provide everything to every child. Um and in so doing usurp the role of the family and make families and the rising generation dependent on government. Instead of becoming self-reliant um and able to think clearly uh and and chart their own course. I I think a good education system helps children um love what is good and beautiful and right. And gives them the freedom to follow their conscience and decide uh what success means for them.
So, thank you, Natalie.
Yep, you can visit my website at Natalie J Klein dot com uh to learn more about the work I've done while on the board. And if you want to donate or to um volunteer in some way, I would, I would love that help. And please, there's, there's a section there you can fill out. Also, again, you can go to our webpage. Higherground dot work. That's W O R K. Takes work to get to higher ground. Um to learn about the systems um that have been corrupted and that are seeking to. Um take your child to to a certain destination that may or may not be where you want your child to end up.
Awesome. Thank you, Natalie. Um with the last minute here, Monica, if you want to give us your message to Utah.
Okay, well, I agree with everything Natalie says there. These are much needed changes. Um that our system uh must be making. And and I am running because I've seen a lot of these bad global and national agendas. That have come down and and are being facilitated by the State Board of Education. So they're coming from the top. And I believe the state is standing in the way of students becoming the inspired and informed. And independent and intelligent individuals that they deserve a chance to be. So it's very important that people are aware and of of aware of all these. Uh agendas that are coming through the schools and how they affect their kids at the very ground level. Um just for instance, um my own children, um their high school has a proficiency rate of ten percent. In math. That means ten percent of the kids can do math at grade level. Whereas they are graduating almost eighty percent of the students. And uh the the scores aren't that much better for for reading and writing at grade level. Twenty percent of the kids are proficient at grade level. And yet again, they're graduating almost eighty percent of the kids. This is not okay. And we are shortchanging our children um uh to serve a system that isn't serving them. So that's why I'm running for the state board and we need a course correction and it needs to start at the top. And uh we need people willing to say the hard things and to take the hard stances in order to make it happen. So my website is monica wilbur dot com and you can see much of my work along with Natalie's at higherground dot work.
All right. Thank you, Monica. And and thank you to both of you for taking the time to sit down and talk with me. Um I I've loved it and I wish you both the best of luck uh on the campaign trail and with the election. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Chase. It's been a pleasure.
Thanks, Chase. It's great.